Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Spring Annual and Special Town Meeting Preview. I'm Steve Trafalati, Plymouth Town Moderator, and I'd like to welcome everyone who is with us this evening in person for the live presentation on Thursday, March 28th. It is six o'clock and we are in the Great Hall in Town Hall. I'd like to acknowledge our panel. To my right, we have Nicole Manfredi. She is the Assistant Town Moderator. To my left, Stephen Neerman. He is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. We're also joined by our town clerk, Kelly McKelreith, also by Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development, Silvio Gennaro, and he is our Assistant Town Manager, and Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board. And in keeping with past practice, I'd like to just say that this is an opportunity to have an overview of the motions for town meeting. We have some presentations, and we want to provide you with information as to how to get materials. So, for example, there are a number of books that town meeting members should have and that are available, including a publication from the Plymouth Public Schools. We have the report and recommendation of the Advisory and Finance Committee. This town meeting, it has a green cover. There is one for the annual town meeting, and there is another one for the special town meeting. It's a salmon-colored cover. In addition, we have the general government operating budget, as well as the spring town meeting from the Community Preservation Committee. So those are the materials. We're also joined by Plymouth School Committee Chair, Michelle Badger, and she is here for the Plymouth Public Schools. And so at this time, we're going to begin as we would normally at town meeting and start with the special town meeting. And what we would normally do in the morning is hear from a few people, and we have some of those people with us. We're going to begin with the Assistant Moderator, Nicole Manfredi. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. So, April, the April 6th town meeting will again be held in a hybrid format to provide maximum access to the voting members. If you anticipate a conflict on April 6th, the hard deadline for registration for remote participation is tomorrow at noon. Due to technology and staff limitations, once you register for remote participation, you are locked into that format and will no longer be eligible to participate in person. Currently, we have approximately 35 town meeting members registered for remote participation. If you are one of those 35, you will receive an email from me tomorrow, and attached to that email will be the training video as a refresher. On Monday, you will receive a single email from Dave Antoine at Local Scene that will include both your Zoom and V voter credentials. If you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, Nicole Manfredi, again, Assistant Town Moderator and at town meeting. And by the way, she'll be helping as a liaison with me and the technological support that we're going to have at town meeting, along with the many other things that she does. We have our town clerk, Kelly McKelreith. Kelly, anything you'd like to add to what Nicole said?
No, just like she stated, tomorrow at, by noon time, please let us know. And just as a reminder, if for some reason, town meeting goes and gets continued to Monday evening, you cannot change your status. So if you're in person on Saturday, you would have to be in person on Monday evening as well, and vice versa, virtual and virtual.
Thank you. Stephen Neerman is Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Steve, do you have any preliminary remarks that you'd like to make?
Sure. I would like to thank the other 14 members of our Advisory and Finance Committee for all their hard work through virtually every Wednesday night, starting at the beginning of this year, and through all the precinct caucus meetings. Couldn't have done it without them.
Thank you, Steve. And now we're going to continue. This gives you an idea. We're going to start promptly at 8:00 a.m. on April 6th. We begin with some opening ceremonies. We will have, you will be hearing again from the Assistant Moderator, from the clerk, from the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee, as well as several other elected officials, also from School Committee Chair, Michelle Badger, who's here with us this evening, and also from the Select Board. And we have Mr. Canty representing the Select Board this evening. For the initial motions, initially go into the annual, and we have some procedural motions. First, we will have a procedural motion that would be hybrid, and I'm not going to get into much discussion on that, except to tell you that this is required by statute. In order to do this hybrid, we need to have an approval. We also are going to have a motion that there be an adjournance session on Monday, April 8, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., and then we would recess into the annual, the special. So we would leave the annual, we're in the special. For those of you that have just arrived, there are extra copies of tonight's motions over in the table there, and they're available for you. This is still a working document. There's at least one motion contained in there that is going to be revised. But going to the special town meeting, Article 1, no action. Article 2, no action. Article 3, a motion to pay unpaid bills of a prior year, and Mr. Neerman moves a town vote to transfer the sum of $1,063.38. Mr. Neerman.
Yes, the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 3. Approval of this article will authorize the Finance Department to process the outstanding invoice for Matthews Cremation totaling $1,643.38. On behalf of the crematory department, the funding for this invoice will come from the fiscal year 2024 budget for crematory repairs. Back to you.
Thank you, Stephen Neerman. And the quantum of vote is nine tenths. All of these will be roll call, either the electronic voting for the in-person town meeting member participants using their clicker, and the virtual voter program for those doing remotely. We do have a number of people participating remotely. If you have questions for the Plymouth Public Schools, in addition to the Chair of the School Committee, Dr. Christopher Campbell is also with us, participating remotely, and we also have town meeting members who would be participating remotely and available to us. At this time, we're going to go to Article 4B1. And tonight's forum is going to be a combination presentation night as well as a preview. And when we have presentations, we're going to begin with them. And so for Article 4B1, it's a motion, the capital improvements, $3,400,000. Mr. Neerman moves that the $3,400,000 is appropriate for the purpose of financing. We're going to go to the video and then go to Mr. Neerman. And we thank Christopher Quinn from the Local Scene, formerly PACT TV, who is here with us in person in the studio. And here we go.
The town of Plymouth is considering an expansion of the DPW compound on Camelot Drive through the acquisition of a commercially developed parcel located at 22 Mary B Lane, which is adjacent to the existing DPW facility. Article 4 of a special town meeting will decide whether to approve the requested 3.4 million, which provides funding for both the acquisition and design of the property. Constructed in 2012, the 16,000-square-foot building would need to be converted into office and meeting spaces prior to occupancy. Renovation costs are estimated between 8 to 10 million and would need to be proposed as a separate article at a future town meeting. In October 2022, a consultant from the engineering firm Weston &amp; Sampson completed a study demonstrating that the Department of Public Works is in acute need of a new administrative building to properly accommodate the personnel employed throughout the DPW. New construction, complete with administrative building, a new fuel depot, site development, escalation, and associated soft costs were estimated at more than $100 million. A three-phased construction concept estimated that the administrative building alone would cost $20 million of the total DPW renovation project. The proposal was dismissed as financially untenable, and the process of finding an alternative solution began. The Department of Public Works is the town's dutiful and reliable connection between residents and businesses through the maintenance and repair of roads and town-owned infrastructure. Comprised of 10 separate divisions, the DPW performs myriad professional services which affect the community daily. Supported by a knowledgeable administrative staff, the division of the DPW include cemetery and crematorium, engineering, facilities, fleet maintenance, highway, parks and forestry, sewer, solid waste and recycling, airport, and water. The duties and responsibilities of the DPW vary widely from day to day and may include: repair and maintenance of more than 400 miles of road throughout the town; maintenance or clearing of drainage structures comprising of 105 culverts; and more than 5,200 catch basins; street sweeping 240 miles of public roads; maintenance of 62 miles of gravity sewers; eight publicly-owned sewer pump stations; and servicing 3,697 sewerage customers. The plant treats an average of 1.5 million gallons per day and processes and disposes of approximately 18 million gallons of septic and sludge annually. Fleet Division is responsible for maintaining and repairing the 143 vehicles used by the DPW; and 57 used by the Police Department. The Division currently has five mechanics: town tree removal, maintenance or care, roadside mowing, sign repair and installation, traffic light and street lamp repair, service and maintenance, leaves and other debris cleanup, maintenance, repair, and habitability of 32 municipal properties and associated grounds, maintenance, repair, and functionality of 26 sports fields, 25 tennis, basketball, and pickleball courts, 32 parks, 20 memorial benches, 22 cemeteries, and five public beaches. Maintenance of 250 miles of water mains, 10 water storage tanks, 15,000 service connections, and 13 well locations for delivery of over 4 million gallons of water per day. The DPW is frequently on-call 24 hours a day to combat weather-related emergencies and unscheduled fleet or other maintenance discrepancies. DPW staff are the prime respondents to snow and ice removal operations, storm-force wind cleanup, flooding, main water breaks due to freezing temps, road hazard removal, oil spill recovery, vehicle accidents, emergency road repairs, emergency response management, and the support of other departmental components. Public Works agencies are considered first responders under Homeland Security Presidential Directive HSPD-8. And in a town the size of Plymouth, the role of the DPW is critical to the continued safety and vitality of the community. The existing DPW administration offices and facilities at 159 and 169 Camelot Drive were constructed in 1988 and 1990 respectively, and the growth of the department has outpaced the survivability of the current structures. DPW employees are spread out over five locations, and in some instances, administrative staff are in a different building than the division head due to lack of office space. A consolidation would strengthen the ability of the DPW to effectively respond to service requests and emergencies. The neighboring parcel includes 1.05 acres of land, 194 feet of frontage along Mary B Lane, 15 paved parking spaces, a 12,000-square-foot building with an additional 4,000-square-foot mezzanine located in the showroom. Renovations will provide ADA-compliant accommodations for approximately 40 personnel and two separate meeting spaces. The contiguous location of the property provides an advantageous opportunity to provide the necessary accommodations both expeditiously and at a reasonable cost. The proposal to purchase the property for renovation as office and support space for the DPW's administrative and engineering staff is fiscally sound and consistent with the three decades of growth since the completion of the existing DPW compound. The proposed 22 Mary B Lane acquisition and renovation costs represents 33% to 40% overall savings when compared to a newly constructed building. As the parcel is adjacent to the existing DPW compound, acquisition of 22 Mary B Lane would positively impact the developmental needs of the DPW for future expansion. The potential Mary B Lane acquisition is a considerably more feasible and cost-effective option for the Department of Public Works and the town of Plymouth.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to go to Stephen Neerman. He is the Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee. Mr. Neerman.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve by unanimous vote. Article 4, approval of this article will authorize the acquisition of 22 Mary B Lane, design services, and OPM for the new DPW administration building.
Thank you. We also, at this preview, like to provide people with names of staff who would be available to answer questions as you prepare for town meeting. And this evening, we have with us in person William Coyle. He's the Director of the Department of Public Works. Mr. Coyle, did you have anything you wanted to add to the video presentation? Mr. Coyle is coming forward, is coming to you live at town meeting preview. Welcome, Mr. Coyle.
Good evening, thank you. Bill Coyle, DPW Director. First, I wanted to thank PACT TV for all the work that they did. Erica Christensen, in particular, who was the producer of the videos, who spent a lot of time working with DPW and town staff to prepare this for us. And so again, we thank her and the team at PACT TV. This project is very important to DPW. This would actually provide a headquarters for DPW administrative staff. Currently, we are spread out over several buildings, and this would allow us to occupy one building with the engineering, highway, parks, forestry, cemetery, sewer, and water divisions and facilities. So it's very important to us. I think it would allow for future growth of DPW. Currently, we have very limited space to have any other personnel in the admin staffing. So this, in my opinion, would provide future growth for the next 30-plus years. And it is located immediately adjacent to the current compound, so it's very convenient. We'll be able to walk right next door to the location, and all our equipment is right there as well. It's a much less expensive alternative, I think, than what was presented a couple of years ago, which was $80 to $100 million with this particular project, 3.4 million to purchase the property. Engineering and owner's project manager, and as stated in the video, we would be going to a future town meeting for appropriation of the additional funding to renovate the entire building if it's approved at special town meeting to go forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, William Coyle. He is Director, Department of Public Works. Richard Cirke, town meeting member. Welcome, Mr. Cirke.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a question as to whether the feasibility of the town Highway Barn property, which is already owned by the town, was considered as an alternative.
Would care to respond to that question from town meeting member, Richard Cirke. Mr. Coyle.
Sure, thank you, sir. I believe you're referring to the water barn on Long Pond Road? Okay. So I think what makes this property so much more desirable than that location is it would be in one location, so we'd have all three buildings immediately adjacent to each other. And so rather than having staff meet at one location and have to drive up to the road to the water barn, and I think there's probably other plans for that location as well. But I can understand your comment, it's a great comment, but I think our goal is to try to get DPW centralized and not dispersed as it currently is. Thank you.
We're going to continue to go through the warrant as it was established by Select Board. However, at town meeting, it is always possible for a motion to change the order of the articles. People often ask me, when do they need to be at town meeting? And we start at 8:00, and it goes as long as town meeting wants to go. And in some years, we've gone well past what would normally be the start of dinner hour. So a reminder to everyone that people can also move to reconsider if they're on the prevailing side. So if you have a matter that interests you and then you leave, it's possible it could come up again. So I just want to put everybody on notice that we can't predict how long town meeting is going to be, but we do have an adjournance session scheduled for Monday if needed. For those of you that have more recently arrived, there are copies of the motions at the table to my left, and you can get your copy if you want to follow along with the next article, 5, motion, and it is pavement management stabilization fund. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article 5. Approval of this article will authorize the town to transfer $1,000,000, $1,646,811 from free cash to the Pavement Management Plan Debt Stabilization Fund for future use as it relates to road repair, maintenance, and/or construction in the town. This amount is the excess of actual motor vehicle excise receipts over the amount budgeted for fiscal year 2023. The current balance in the fund is $4,204,447.
Any questions? I know we had at least 11 town meeting members participating remotely. If any of them have questions as well, as well as people in the room. We will begin promptly at 8:00 on Saturday, April 6th. We will go till approximately 10:00, at which time we'll have a morning recess, approximately 15 minutes. We will then resume. A quorum is presumed unless it's questioned. Lunch will be around midday, provided by the Plymouth Public Schools. It'll be for 45 minutes, and then we'll continue in the afternoon session until town meeting either dissolves or adjourns till Monday evening. And we're going to continue. Article 6, General Purpose Stabilization Fund. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous decision, town meeting approve Article 6. Approval of this article will help the town achieve its goal in accordance with the town of Plymouth's financial policy recommendation to have at least 5% of our operating budget in our General Purpose Stabilization Fund. This article authorizes the town to transfer $500,000 from free cash to the General Purpose Stabilization Fund. The current balance in the General Purpose Stabilization Fund is $12,727,132.
And the last article, and this article and the one following, if you have questions, you can contact Lynn Barrett. She's the Director of Finance. Article 7 is to amend a bylaw on the capital improvement plan. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote, town meeting approve Article 7. Approval of this article will amend the bylaw, Section 38-2, capital improvement program to increase the threshold for capital requests from $15,000 to $25,000.
Thank you. And we're going to continue with the next article, which is Article 8A, Reduce Pilgrim Hall Borrowing. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 8A. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use Community Preservation Act funds available from Article 9D, hold on, from, from, hold on. Funds available from, this is not reading right. Article 9D, 2022, which is the fall town, the annual town meeting, 1857 Foundry Marina to reduce the borrowing commitment for the historical preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation for the Pilgrim Hall Meeting Museum.
Thank you. Again, Lynn Barrett available to answer questions. And move on to Article 8B, Reduce Stevens Field Borrowing.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article 8B. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use available Community Preservation Act undesignated funds to reduce the borrowing commitment for the restoration and rehabilitation of Stevens Field.
Thank you. Again, Lynn Barrett available. Article 8C, it is a motion to reduce the Spire Center borrowing.
The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 8C. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use available Community Preservation Act undesignated funds to reduce the borrowing commitment for the historical preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation for the Spire Center.
Again, Lynn Barrett available to answer. Any questions? Article 9A, to adopt Master of Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17E. It's a housekeeping item. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 9A. Approval of this article will accept Clause 17E, which authorizes an annual increase in the asset limit for senior citizens, surviving spouses, and surviving minors. The current limit is $62,620.
And the next article, Article 9B, again, another housekeeping item, same statute, but Clause 17F. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 9B. Approval of this article will accept Clause 17F, which authorizes an annual increase to the exemption amount for senior citizens, surviving spouses, and surviving minors. The current exemption amount is $293.
Thank you, Mr. Neerman. Moving on to 9C, again, housekeeping item on the same statute, but Clause 41A, Increase Gross Receipts for Senior.
The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 9C. Approval of this article will authorize an annual increase to the income limit for Clause 41A based on the non-headed household according to the circuit breaker tax credit for the preceding year. Eligible seniors could defer their entire real estate tax lest the CPA surcharge each year up to 50% of the house value plus interest. The current income limit under Clause 41A is $51,000, and the current circuit breaker income for 2023 is $69,000.
Thank you again. Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions, and we're going to continue on with Article 9D, the annual increases for elderly. Clause 41D, Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 9D. Approval of this article will accept Clause 41D, which authorizes an annual increase for seniors based on 100% of the Consumer Price Index set by the Department of the Revenue for income, gross receipts, and assets whole estate amount. The current income limit is $20,000 per single and $30,000 per married couple. The current asset whole estate limit is $40,000 per single and $55,000 per married couple.
Thank you. Any questions? Again, Lynn Barrett is available to answer questions. And now we're going to move on to Article 10. It's a motion to establish a new revolving fund for library lost materials. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee by unanimous vote recommends town meeting approve Article 10. Approval of this article will establish a new library lost materials revolving fund to deposit fees collected for lost or damaged materials and the purchase of new or replacement materials per the library's collection development policy. This article also authorizes the spending limit of $15,000 for fiscal year 2025 and subsequent years.
Thank you. Kelsey Casey is the library director. She's available to answer questions, as well as Michelle Braddy. She's the Commissioner of Health and Human Services. And now, at this time, we're going to move on to Article 11, and we're going to begin with a presentation from Kevin Canty. He is Vice Chair of the Select Board, and this has to do with adopting a new bylaw loitering. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My presentation is in relation to Article 12, but I can speak to Article 11 if you'd like me to. So Article 11 is a proposed loitering bylaw. There is a main motion that will be presented by the Advisory and Finance Committee that made some amendments to the- made some amendments to the original text that was in the warrant that have been ruled to be within the scope as defined and ruled by town council, which would make it a civil infraction to loiter in public parking lots in the Town of Plymouth beyond the hours of eight PM until the hours of six AM. It also signage would be posted by the Select Board. If this were to be passed, it's not in the bylaw, but the Select Board would do so so that people would have the ability to self-regulate. There's also language in there that permits the discretionary application of the civil infraction to a first-time offender and then compulsory application of it to second and subsequent offenders. So that will be the main motion that will be presented to town meeting this April.
Thank you, Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board. And now we'll go back to the Advisory and Finance Committee. Stephen Neerman.
The Advisory and Finance Committee have voted unanimously to approve the amended bylaw language. As presented in the warrant, we felt it was too restrictive and are recommending that town meeting approve the following amended language.
You want to read through it? No. Thank you. And Chief Dana Flynn, our police chief, is available to answer questions. And now we'll go back on Article Twelve, which is special legislation to grant two new liquor licenses. Again, on behalf of the Plymouth Select Board, Kevin Canty, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Plymouth Select Board. Special Town Meeting Article Twelve is an article put onto the warrant by the Select Board seeking to get town meeting approval for the submission of special legislation to the Legislature of the Commonwealth to grant the Town of Plymouth two additional liquor licenses beyond what we have presently. Presently, the town has sixteen liquor licenses. This would increase the total number of liquor licenses to eighteen. And when I speak of liquor licenses, I'm talking about liquor stores, off-premises consumption, not restaurants, and for all liquor as well. So this is a, this is an item that was put on the warrant to increase our commercial tax base by a little bit with these two additional liquor stores that would be created. The two licenses that would be created by this particular special legislation would be perpetually geographically limited to the current meets and bounds of Precincts Nine and Seventeen. So currently, as you can see from the map that is up on the screen, liquor stores are concentrated in the northeastern part of town. If you look at the map on the left, you can see every star there is an all liquor off-premises license. And you can see that where it all began has a significant concentration up in the northeast there. And as you get farther from there, you see fewer and fewer. When you get to the southwestern part of town, there are none at all. So Precinct Seventeen is that sort of peachy salmon color, similar to the Special Town Meeting warrant books cover. And then Precinct Nine is similar to the annual town meeting books cover, which is right next to it there. So those are the two precincts that would have this geographically limited liquor licenses permitted in them in perpetuity. And it's in perpetuity because every ten years after the census, the precinct lines are redrawn. Typically, they grow. In theory, if people were to leave town, they could also shrink. But even when the Town of Plymouth is celebrating its eight-hundredth anniversary, these particular liquor licenses would be geographically restricted to Precincts Nine and Seventeen. People are continuing to move into the Town of Plymouth in large numbers. People are continuing to move into the south of Plymouth in large numbers. You see the neighborhood of Redbrook, the village of Redbrook, developing at a steady pace, and Precinct Nine is also seeing changes. Precinct Seventeen, I will remind people, before the 2020 census, didn't even exist. I mean, there was land there, but Precinct Seventeen was, is up over and above the fifteen precincts that we used to have, which demonstrates the number of people that are moving down to this area of town. So currently, as you can see from those stars, people in the southwest of town are taking their business often to Wareham and Bourne as opposed to in Plymouth. And the Select Board believes that rather than sending business like that outside of town, that there is a market demand for people within those borders to stay in town and make a purchase there. So currently, the commercial tax base of Plymouth is rather light. We would like to increase that. We'd like to do that in a broad spectrum with white-collar jobs, blue-collar jobs, so that more people can live and work in the same community. Liquor stores are a small portion of that overall scheme, but this is something that if we create the licenses, the businesses will come. Attracting some of those other things, it requires looking at zoning, looking at height restrictions, making better use of our existing industrial parks and things of that nature. A much more complicated, much longer discussion. This is something where if we create the licenses, the businesses will come, and as you can see from that map, there is clearly a geographic need for such a service. So current zoning would permit, this is a question that often comes up, where would these liquor licenses actually go? There's Little Sandy Pond Campground in Precinct Nine, which currently has a wine and beer license, but not an all alcohol license. So that is one area in Precinct Nine that is currently zoned to take it if they were to apply and be approved, of course. Precinct Seventeen has Redbrook within it. That has some land that is zoned for commercial. Only commercial or light, or light industrial type land could have these types of businesses. And currently, those are the only two areas in those two precincts that are zoned properly to take them. But any applicant would have to apply, would have to meet the basic threshold criteria, would have to have a public hearing where members of the public would have the opportunity to speak in favor or in opposition of these particular proposals. And so no one is going to be just automatically given a license like this. There still would be a public process which would go, go forward. This is an opportunity to create some quick commercial tax base increase. We are obviously later in this town meeting going to be talking about some significant budgetary issues and raises in the tax rate, and this is a way to try and level that and reduce the burden to the residential taxpayers while providing a service in terms of liquor sales to people that have the fortune of living in the southwestern portion of our community. So that is what we are looking to do. That is why we are looking to do it, and I am available for any questions that anyone may have.
Yes, Richard Cirque. Perhaps while Mr. Cirque's here, let's hear from Stephen Neerman first on his recommendation.
Sure. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that town meeting approve Article Twelve by a vote of ten votes for, two votes against, and zero abstentions. Approve.
Richard Cirque.
Was this article prompted by requests from thirsty would-be consumers or entrepreneurial would-be landlords?
So this request was prompted by a demand in those areas from residents, as well as, at least in one case, interest in potentially applying for a license by a holder, but they would have to apply, the license would have to be created for them to apply. So both of those things demonstrate that there is demand from, from a customer base for the service, as well as at least partial demand from the applicant base for the existence of the license.
Any further discussion? If not, moving on. This would then be the time when we would have a motion to dissolve the special town meeting. And if town meeting does vote to dissolve, then we can't go back to any of the articles because we will have dissolved town meeting. And normally, there'll be no break, although I'm just going to take this opportunity to announce that for anyone that cannot stay with us for the entire evening, there will be a replay of this evening's presentation by the local scene. And these replay showings are on Plymouth Comcast nine channel and Verizon Channel Forty-seven, and they would be Sunday, March thirty-one at twelve PM and four PM, Monday, April one, and Wednesday, April third, and Friday, April fifth at noon, Tuesday, April second, and Thursday, April fourth at one PM, and finally, Friday, April fifth at six PM. Plenty of opportunities to be able to revisit the information that you're hearing this evening. And at this time, we would go back into the annual town meeting, and we begin with a Article One, No Action article. The next article is a Consent Agenda, and we have a motion. Mr. Neerman. Mr. Neerman.
Thank you. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article Two, unanimous vote of eleven to zero to zero. Approval of this article will allow boards and committees to place their reports on file with the town clerk. Most boards and committee reports can be found in the annual town report.
Thank you. And if the Consent Agenda fails, we would deal with that. But then going on with the Consent Agenda, the next would be Article Four, continuation of committees.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article Three. Approval of this article.
Actually, Mr. Neerman, I was going through the consent. Because that's how we would be doing it at town meeting. So the Consent Agenda, we have Article Two that you've done. Next article under the Consent Agenda would be Article Four.
Okay. Over three. You're jumping over three.
Yes. And maybe to make it easier for Mr. Neerman, I'll go according to the warrant for this evening, but just so you know, at town meeting, when we come to the very first item, it will be the Consent Agenda, which has Articles Two, Four, Six, Twelve, and Thirteen. But for purposes of this evening, I'll just, I'll just continue on with the warrant as it's written. So, Mr. Neerman, go ahead. Go to Article Three.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends to town meeting by unanimous decision to approve Article Three. Approval of this article will set the fiscal 2025 spending caps for each of the revolving funds listed herein pursuant to General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and One Half.
Thank you. And that's Article Three. The revolving funds, again, we have Lynn Barrett available to answer questions. And on the Consent Agenda, next article, Article Four.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approves Article Four. Approval of this article will authorize the Plymouth Harbor Committee, the Manomet Steering Committee, and the West Plymouth Steering Committee to continue to operate for the next three years with a further review in three years at the 2027 Annual Town Meeting.
Thank you. And next, Article Five, No Action. Again, on the Consent Agenda, next Article Six. Mr. Neerman.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote that town meeting approve Article Six. Approval of this article will set the annual stipends for the Select Board and Town Moderator. There are no changes to the stipend amounts this year. The Chair of the Select Board will receive a stipend of forty-five hundred dollars. The forty-four remaining Select Board members will receive four thousand dollars each, and the moderator will receive two thousand dollars. The funding for these stipends are included in Article Seven A, the general fund balance.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to Article Seven. And I'd like to draw to the attention of town meeting members that at the back of your motion book, you will see information regarding the budget. And as we go through the budget on Saturday, April sixth, at town meeting, you can certainly look at the report on page sixty-five in the report and recommendations, but as we go through to take some votes, we're going to be going according to the subcommittee reports. And beginning on page twenty-two of those of you that have the motion book this evening, you'll see that we have groupings, and so we'll begin with, for example, the A grouping. So I just want to cue you in, and again, there's the whole book on the budget, but at town meeting and this evening, we're going to begin with a presentation. And once again, we welcome back Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board, on behalf of the Select Board, presenting on Article Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the town budget, obviously, the, some would call it the main attraction to an April town meeting. So this is about what our budget actually does as opposed to just being numbers and just being something that increases your taxes. So obviously, the budget does a lot of things. There's a lot of different departments on the town side and the school side, a lot of different services that are provided by the town side and school side. We have services provided out of this building from a number of different departments. We have obviously very important services that are delivered by the schools to our, our students and our families in that regard. But then there are obviously some of the ones that stand out on the town side and get more of the, the fanfare that we just want to go over a little bit in terms of what actually is happening on our streets and in our community, and why it's important that these types of services are able to be funded and staffed by appropriate individuals. So for the Plymouth Police Department, one of our, one of our very important departments within the community, in calendar year of 2023, they responded to forty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine calls for service. That included four thousand and eighteen reported criminal offenses, nine hundred and sixty-nine of which were felonies. Six hundred and fifty-nine of those responses involved the arrests of an individual or more than one individual. There were also one thousand, four hundred and fifty-two motor vehicle crashes within our community, four thousand, one hundred and fifty-two citations for motor vehicle infractions, thirty-three hundred and eleven of which were written warnings. So some people got a pass, a few people did not. Co-response clinicians also responded to three hundred and fifty-nine mental health calls and performed mental health evaluations. So three hundred and fifty-nine mental health calls, that's nearly one mental health call every day. So part of this budget is increasing the total staffing of the mental health evaluation clinicians from two to three so that there can be one on every shift, because as you can see from that number there, there's clearly a demand there. When you have a mental health professional on scene and on site, you can respond to individuals that are having mental health difficulties in a way that is different from the traditional police response, and you're also encouraging police officers that are working with those clinicians to understand and appreciate those types of issues better, even when they are perhaps in the future not working directly with that clinician. So you're going to see a direct and indirect benefit from having this tool in the police's toolbox going forward. Obviously, we're still dealing with the opiate epidemic and the, the response to that. It's better than it used to be, but it's still not great. We responded to one hundred and ten medical overdoses in the past, and fourteen of which were fatal. It says one fourteen, but it's fourteen, so we didn't lose more people than overdose. Then, they also responded to two hundred and sixty-two incidents where individuals were transported to the hospital for alcohol intoxication. And move on to our fire department. There are one hundred and thirty-eight uniform members and eight civilian employees that staff seven fire stations and one emergency management center throughout our community. The fire department responded to twelve thousand, three hundred and seventy-one calls for service in calendar year 2023. Three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one, or thirty-one percent of them were fire-related. Eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-four, or sixty-nine percent of them were rescue or EMS calls. The Plymouth Fire Department protects an estimated fourteen point nine billion dollars in real property in Plymouth. There was a total loss due to fire in calendar year 2023 of nine hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy, which isn't that much considering fourteen point nine billion dollars worth of real property was protected, so that's a pretty good return on investment for our fire department, let alone all the lives that were saved by those fire-related and EMS-related calls. And we have our DPW. At full staffing, the operating budget of the DPW has personnel which consists of over eighty employees, including the engineering, facilities maintenance, fleet maintenance, highway, and cemetery and crematory divisions. They also are responsible for road maintenance. In addition to the employees that are doing the work, there's also contracted services that are doing some of this work. We have three hundred and seventy-seven miles of roads within Plymouth, three hundred and three of which are paved, seventy-four miles of which are unpaved. You're seeing elsewhere in this particular town meeting an increase to the Pavement Management Stabilization Fund. That's so that we can, instead of what we're doing right now is basically keeping pace with road maintenance, we're not losing ground, but we're not funding it at a level that we're able to gain ground and improve the cumulative quality of our roads. So we're looking to increase the funding there so that roads will improve over time because that is causing wear and tear damage on people's vehicles and other problems, safety concerns. And the current funding mechanism, if it wasn't increased, only allows four miles a year to be improved. Fifty-eight miles of roads currently require major rehabilitation. So if we did not increase the, the amount of funding there and no road were to get any worse than it is right now at all, then it would still take almost fifteen years at current funding to repair all the roads that need major rehabilitation, let alone the ones that need a less serious amount of work. So that is why it is imperative that we increase the funding to not only the DPW, but also to the Pavement Management Stabilization Fund. You also have, as I mentioned, people in this building that are delivering services, answering questions that people have, responding to building permits. You have your town clerk's office, your finance department. You have a lot of places that people only think about when they You have a lot of places that people only think about when they really need something. But when they need it, they want that service to be delivered to them in a way that is efficient and professional. And we are fortunate to have a lot of staff and employees that work in this building and other town buildings that deliver on that request every day and demands from our residents every day. But that unfortunately requires us to pay for it. So we are trying, in this budget, to reverse a longstanding policy that the town had had of keeping a lot of money in excess levy capacity. We had, going into this budget cycle, $8.7 million in excess levy capacity. We're looking to reduce that down to just over $2 million in excess levy capacity. The reason we're doing that is in order to provide the services that I've just described to you, as well as all the other services that people demand, and meet our existing and known issues, such as things with our facilities maintenance, issues with our roads, as I mentioned briefly, and other known concerns that we have throughout the community, including the retention and training of staff. We need more money to do that. If we had had this same policy over the previous five years, we would have had 27.7 more million dollars in our budget. So we would have been addressing concerns in a more timely fashion, more consistently, and having an easier time retaining and recruiting staff. The fact that we haven't done that, there's nothing we can do about that. There's no capital request for a DeLorean with a flux capacitor at this town meeting. But what we can do is move forward in a way that is more responsible, because leaving those issues unaddressed is costing the community more money over time. If you don't repair a building, it doesn't get better by itself, it gets worse, and then it costs more money. If you don't have the right staff to do a job, it gets, it doesn't get done. And then when you have to do it, it's more expensive to do it. If you lose staff to other communities, you have to train other staff, and there's a cost there of constantly onboarding staff and then shipping them off to another community that's going to pay them better. So this budget shifts our priorities to one of, of pennywise but pound foolish, to being something that is fiscally responsible for Plymouth's present near-term and long-term needs. And that is why the Select Board is recommending what it is in terms of the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin Canty, Vice Chair. And was there anything you wanted to add, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, as to the budget?
Alls I'll add is that the budget documents for Article Seven A are detailed in the, the green budget book that the moderator mentioned earlier and the school department budget book that was included in packets that were mailed to all town meeting members.
Thank you, Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance. Stephen Neiman, Advisory and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, which is Report A, by unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $15,539,316, which is a net decrease of $97,500 to the Select Board's budget, as detailed in Subcommittee Report A.
Thank you, and we have a motion to amend. It's our first. We have Kevin Lynch moves to amend, and he wants to decrease Item One, Town Manager, Personal Services by 90,000. And Derek Brindisi would be available to answer any questions on this motion. Mr. Lynch is going to participate virtually. Is he with us this evening? He is not with us, participating virtually. We do have the Assistant Town Manager with us, Silvio Janau. Sylvia, anything you want to add in response to Mr. Lynch's motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Silvio Janau, Assistant Town Manager. No, I just want to echo what you mentioned, that the Town Manager will be available for any questions in regards to this amendment.
Thank you. And if there are no more questions, we will want to Subcommittee Report B. Oh, yes, we have a question. Mr. Cirque, come forward to the microphone.
Mr. Canty, could you go back to the fire department? With respect to the 12,371 calls, 31% were fire-related. The others were rescue or EMS calls. In fairness, I've discussed this with the fire chief a number of times, and I've never been fully satisfied as to why, when rescue, medical or emergency calls come into the fire department, why a fire truck is needed to respond, manned by firemen in fire uniforms. I can tell you in my own experience, there was a point several years ago when I, I, I fell in my house, and I needed medical attention because my back went out. And the next thing I knew, there was a fire truck behind my house with, with firemen in, in, in uniforms. And when, when my wife, when my wife called it in, she said, "No need for a fire truck." But that's what happened. And it, it just seems, it seems an inappropriate response to all situations to send fire trucks out in all situations.
For this question?
I would, I would love to respond to that. So, so I think there's a couple of reasons why the fire department responds the way they do to some. And first of all, I don't think every single call involves a fire truck. I think sometimes, I mean, Brewster ambulance is there as well, so that's some of the response. But often, when you see firemen, or firefighters, I should say, responding to calls, first things first, if we wanted to have them respond in a different vehicle, we'd have to buy different vehicles for them to respond, so there'd be a cost there. We'd have to have the gear on the second vehicle, because obviously, time is a factor. So you have, if you have a fire truck, and that fire truck responds to all the calls, as long as that fire truck is fully stocked on all things that it needs to respond to, you don't have to worry about shifting stuff over to the other vehicle, and you don't have to worry about buying supplies for two different sets of vehicles. I think also you have situations where these are calls that are made by civilians about what is happening. Sometimes, having listened to a large number of 911 calls myself in my professional life, all the information is not always accurately conveyed, and you need to respond in a way that you can respond to whatever you're actually going to find when you arrive. And having it all on the one vehicle makes sense in that situation. You're also dealing with, sometimes they're responding to motor vehicle accidents as part of those medical calls. And they don't know for, until they arrive, that there's not a fire related to that or a spill related to that. So that explains some of it as well. And then lastly, I would say, you probably also have instances where they leave the fire station, they respond to a call, that call is resolved, but before they get back to the fire station, they have to go to another call. And if they're already on the fire truck with all the gear, they don't have to go all the way back and lose time. So I think there are a number of reasons, and I'm sure at town meeting, when we have professionals that actually work in the firefighting field, they could probably expand on more reasons why they would do so. But those are the reasons, having overseen their budget for a number of years in my prior role, and having worked in this role for about a year now, that I see that the fire department deploys its staff in the way that it does.
If I can just have a follow-up question. You have to also consider that when a fire truck responds to an emergency or a reported emergency at a house, it's not available to respond to another call where there is a fire. There seems to be a conclusive presumption that every call-in requires a fire truck. And I think that's overkill.
Well, I think in that instance, unless we, unless we have sentient fire trucks that can operate themselves when the firemen or firefighters are outside responding in the alternative vehicle, having an alternative vehicle would still leave the fire truck sitting at the station unable to respond to the call, unless we're going to double-staff all our fire departments, which would also increase costs. So I think we also further have, as I said, seven different fire stations throughout the community, which, when one is responding to a call, the others respond to that area that the original one would have covered if they were more available. And we have mutual aid agreements with adjoining communities, which we also reciprocate when they are responding to calls to cover gaps in services called by, that are caused by concurrent calls for services in one particular area.
Mark me down as unconvinced.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Steve, if I can jump into just the-
Lee Hartman is Director of Plane Development.
Come up before with me. So when somebody's calling 911 in an emergency situation, the other issue is you're not sure if you're getting the full amount of information. So when there's a call for 911 that says there's an ambulance, they may not be telling you everything that's going on, that somebody has a heart issue, but they, they're focused on that and forget to tell you that the house is burning down too. So, the, the other concern, I think, that the fire and police chief have is that it's not necessarily what they're getting is complete information. The person calling is often in a distressed mode.
Thank you. Further questions? If not, we'll move on to Subcommittee Report B, which is a part of Article Seven A. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section, Subcommittee Report B, of the budget, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $89,993,326, as detailed in Subcommittee Report B.
Thank you. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. And we move to Subcommittee Report C. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote approval of this section, Subcommittee Report C, of the budget, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $35,625,967, as detailed in Subcommittee Report C.
Thank you, and we move on to D. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote approval of this section of the budget, which is Subcommittee Report D, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $13,955,644 in Subcommittee Report D.
Mr. Coyle is available to answer questions. Subcommittee Report E. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote approval of this section of the budget, which is Subcommittee Report E, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $5,968,440, as detailed in Subcommittee Report E.
Michelle Braddy is the Commissioner of Health and Human Services, available to answer questions. And we're going to continue on with Subcommittee Report F.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends by unanimous vote approval of this section of the budget, which is Subcommittee Report F, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of $119,144,244, as detailed in Subcommittee Report F.
Thank you, and we have with us this evening, Michelle Badger. She is Chair of the Plymouth School Committee. Welcome, Ms. Badger.
Thank you so much. So our budget is 118 million, or over that. And I think what we wanted to discuss as part of this piece is just, and I know Dr. Campbell is online as well, if people have additional questions. But we developed our budget on a zero-based budget this year. We really went down and had every single cost center manager looking at each piece, everything that they did to make sure it was something that we very much needed. Because 76% of our budget is salaries and contracted services. And so that, you've got 90 million of that is salaries. So it only leaves 28 million for the non-salary component, which our budget drivers are the same as they are in, you know, every year. We have our existing contracts, we have an increase in supply in materials. There's special education services, tuitions that we pay for out-of-district placements. Transportation, as we are always talking about, is a big driver here. You know, Plymouth doesn't have a whole lot of east-west roads. We have, which makes transportation to different parts of the town is, which makes transportation a little bit more difficult. We also have, this year, it will be the first year we don't have CARES or ESAR funding since FY21. Yeah, FY21. And so this year, we have, we have salaries that were in that for FY24. Now we will not have FY25. They are in our budget. We have accounted for them. I know at each of the caucuses that we've attended, some people have asked us questions about, you know, are you accounting for all of the salaries that were in ESAR? How are you, we have, they've been moved into our budget, so we will make sure that we, you know, we've, we've covered that. So no surprises. I think we had the question about Brockton. There will not be any surprises, and Dr. Campbell can attest to that as well. We also have negotiations that are coming up that are not included in this. So the contractual services right now, or I should say the, not contract, contracts, negotiations is not included in our budget as it appears right now. We are in the middle of contract negotiations with, and starting other unit negotiations, but we're in the middle with our teachers right now. Our teachers have received, I think, a 1.7% increase over the last 15 years. And so that, as you, if you look at that, everybody has been given the budget book, and Dr. Campbell also sent around the budget presentation for those caucuses we weren't able to get to, or those people who weren't able to join their caucuses. And he has a really great explanation under each piece of the budget, so that hopefully that will help explain to, to everybody where we stand in negotiations, where our teachers have been, you know, we, we haven't been able to give them the increases that they deserve in recent years, as well as our staff. So we're hoping this year to be able to make, make that up to them. Obviously, within a, in the, within the budget that we have, we know that we work the Select Board, and we've put our 1.2 million that was in our budget into a joint fund where they, I think it's now 3.6 million for both sides to share in the same way we develop our, the same way that the town and school budgets percentage-wise is allotted. And so that is, we're hoping that we will be able to negotiate within that amount of money. But if not, we do expect to go back to town meeting and ask for additional in the fall. But that is, I think, a brief overview. I don't know, Dr. Campbell, if I missed anything?
Yes, this is a hybrid presentation, and we have Dr. Christopher Campbell, Superintendent of Plymouth Public Schools, with us. Welcome, Dr. Campbell.
Campbell, Superintendent of Schools. As Ms. Badger said, our budget is, proposed budget is 118,734,770. This is a level service budget, meaning there are no new initiatives. It only accounts for our current needs and nothing else. We worked very collaboratively with the Town Manager and the Finance Director as we built this budget, as we do every year. This budget also, it's important to note, was unanimously approved by the Advisory and Finance Committee. As Ms. Badger said, we have begun negotiations with our bargaining units, and we will be seeking supplemental appropriation, potentially through a reserve account, if approved in the future. So, you know, some of the major drivers, agricultural schools is another one that is a significant driver of our budget. A lot of people don't know that we pay the tuitions for students that are, are applied to and are accepted to our agricultural programs. Bristol-Aggie is one of them. Those tuitions are upwards of $27,000 a year. There's an increase in our budget, approximately $320,000 to cover those costs. Transportation, I won't get into that anymore. Significant driver in our budget, not only for our local buses, but for homeless students, special education students, foster, and the charter schools, which we are fiscally and legislatively responsible for. And as Ms. Badger said, for the loss of state and federal support, that has really helped us get through these declining revenue times during the pandemic particularly. And, you know, we've seen, while our budget is level service, we continue to see a change in our demographic, which really taxes our buildings, but our, our staff does an amazing job. We've seen a, in a five-year period, we've seen a 35% increase in economically disadvantaged students, 25% increase in high-need students, and 100 students that are considered homeless. And in that same five-year period, a 343% increase in English-language learners. So obviously, with this increase in our demographic, the increased need for additional services, translation services, interpretive services, et cetera. But we feel that this budget is a, is both responsive to our students, but responsible to our, our town residents. And we'll be happy to answer any questions at town meeting that arrives, or this evening as well.
Thank you, and that's Dr. Christopher Campbell. He is Superintendent of Plymouth Public Schools. And that is on Subcommittee Report F. No further questions or comments. We're going to move on to, yes, Richard Cirque. Please come to the microphone.
Before we leave Article Seven, I just wanted to ask, Mr. Canty-
It's Report F.
Oh, okay, then I'll wait until we're through with F.
Okay, all right. Well, we're through with F. We're going on to G. Did you want to make a-
I just wanted to ask a question about Article Seven in general.
Do you want us to go through the rest, or do you want to ask the question first?
I'll ask it now. Mr. Canty indicated that our excess levy capacity is going to be down to 2 million?
Yes, 2,63,000 and some change.
What do you envision looking forward is going to happen before we reach the cliff?
Well, I think a number of things. Every year, our budget, our levy capacity, our levy goes up two-and-a-half percent plus new growth. So I think we're entering into contract negotiations right now for all, on the town side and the school side. We've got 3.6 million dollars put aside towards those contract negotiations. 2.4 of that is designated for the town side, 1.2 for the school side, coming over from what their original budget proposal was, that's dedicated for those particular sides. And we will share new growth and Prop. Two-and-a-half growth, we anticipate, at that 61-39% split as it comes in. We don't know when some or all of the contracts will settle. Some of them may settle in time for the fall. Some of them may take longer to settle. I've seen cycles in the past where they settle quickly. I've seen cycles in the past where in the last few months of a contract, they settle and they get retroactive pay. And I think those things will be in the conversation. I don't personally think, right now, that if we were to have an operational override, that people would be lining up to vote yes to pay more taxes. So I think that is something that everybody on the town side, the school side, including the unions, are aware of that particular concern and consideration. We're also working, we intend to work with the schools in a more collaborative way in terms of trying to create some cost savings on both sides of the ledger, in terms of trying to address unfunded mandates from the feds and the states, trying to either get some funding or some relief from those mandates, trying to get things like transportation reimbursement, try to collaborate with other municipalities in terms of things like buying buses so that we don't have to pay exorbitant transportation fees. And if we were computed with other communities, we would be able to get a better price on those types of things than we would otherwise. So we are ready to do everything and anything to make this town work better and function better for its residents while still providing those services without hitting the fiscal cliff. But this is a necessary step in that process.
I'm sure everything you say is the case. It just deserves to be underscored that we're on very, very thin ice.
I understand. And we are leaving a little bit of cushion, that 2 million is, we're still not up at levy limit. We're still not up at build-out. I mean, it is impressive in and of itself that Plymouth has been continuously occupied for over four hundred years, and we're still finding land to develop. Some people have varying levels of opinions about that. But nevertheless, we are still a growing community, and we anticipate we will be able to meet the challenges that come before us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll move on now to Subcommittee G, Water Enterprise Operating Budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, which is 7B Water Enterprise Budget by a unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of 6 million 406,848 dollars as detailed in Subcommittee Report G, Water Enterprise. The committee also recommends approval of the indirect cost for the water enterprise in the amount of 1 million 703,260 dollars.
Thank you. Peter Gordon is our Water Superintendent, available to answer questions. Subcommittee G, Sewer Enterprise Operating Budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, which is the sewer enterprise budget by a unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of 8 million 590,350 dollars as detailed in Subcommittee Report G, Sewer Enterprise. The committee also recommends approval of indirect costs for the sewer enterprise in the amount of 520,500 dollars.
Thank you. And now Douglas Pennard is the Sewer Superintendent. He's available to answer questions. We're going to move on to Subcommittee Report G, the Solid Waste Enterprise Operating Budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, Solid Waste Enterprise Budget by a unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of 919,621 dollars as detailed in the Subcommittee Report G, Solid Waste Enterprise. The committee also recommends approval of the indirect cost for Solid Waste Enterprise in the amount of 361,756 dollars.
Downey, the Assistant Director of Department of Public Works, available to answer questions on this. And continuing on, our next item is for the next Subcommittee Report. And continuing on, we have the Airport and Subcommittee Report G, Airport Enterprise Operating Budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, the Airport Enterprise Budget by a unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of 3 million 747,358 dollars as detailed in the Subcommittee Report G, Airport Enterprise. The committee also recommends approval of indirect cost for the Airport Enterprise in the amount of 446,834 dollars.
Matthew Cardillo is our Airport Manager. He's available to answer questions. Moving on, Subcommittee G, Cable Access Enterprise Operating Budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends approval of this section of the budget, which is Cable Public Access Enterprise Budget by a unanimous vote, and recommends town meeting approve an appropriation of 1 million 545,000 dollars as detailed in the Subcommittee Report G, Cable Public Access Enterprise.
Thank you. Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, available to answer questions. Moving on, now that concludes the Article VII motions. Move on to Article 8A, Facility Capital Maintenance Stabilization Fund. Lynn Barrett is our person who will answer questions. And Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You threw me, too. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 5 by a vote of ten votes in favor, four votes against, and zero abstentions. Approval of this article will authorize the town to raise and appropriate from the levy to the Facility Capital Maintenance Stabilization Fund for future use as it relates to capital maintenance of town-owned buildings.
It's a majority vote. I'll tell you, threw me off, is the next one is going to be a little changed from what we've had. And throughout town meeting, we usually have the main motions from the Advisory and Finance Committee. We have at least two examples of where the Finance Committee is not making the main motion. And one of those examples would be the very next one, the Nuclear Stabilization Fund. And we have a motion being presented at town meeting from Kevin Canty on behalf of the Select Board. He is their Vice Chair. Mr. Canty.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In a vote of five to zero with no abstentions, the Select Board recommends town meeting approve Article 8B. Article 8B would appropriate 500,000 dollars for the purposes of placing it into the Nuclear Stabilization Fund. Intention of this fund in this article is twofold. Number one, to place 500,000 dollars more in the fund, raising the balance in the fund to just over 9 million dollars. And number two, to get town meeting's approval for the concept of designating this 9 million dollars in that fund to be primarily utilized for the purchase of the 1,530.34 acres that are currently owned by Whole Tech Decommissioning International. The town entered into a pilot agreement last fall that involves a enhanced right of first refusal for the, over 270 days beyond the 120 days that we originally had, a 3 million dollar account credit to be used for purchase of some or all of that parcel whenever it comes online and on the market, as well as the right to access for appraisal purposes on an annual basis, and the participation by Whole Tech and the community in a master planning process so that we can identify and prioritize which portions of the parcel we would like to purchase ourselves and how, so that, because we will know how we would like to see them used in the future and make an educated and informed decision on how and if we want to purchase it as they come on the market. It's unclear if that item will come on the market as one giant parcel or in smaller parts. We have the 3 million dollar credit there to begin with. We also have the 9 million dollars in this fund. We estimated that when we settled the pilot agreement, that the cost of the entire parcel would be between 35 and 50 million dollars in 2023. So this would bring us to 12 million dollars towards that, which is a significant down payment. And the Select Board believes that the community deserves to have a place at the table in determining the future of the largest single undeveloped parcel in the town of Plymouth that also features a height of, that is higher than any other point on the eastern seaboard, within a mile of the coast between a point in Maine and a point in Georgia. There's parts of this parcel that deserve to be preserved, parts that could be economically developed. And the community can have a conversation about where those two parts meet and where they separate. But in order to do that, we need money to buy the land, and this is part of that process. Thank you.
We don't have a motion from Finance. We want to hear from them. So we'll now go to Stephen Nierman. He'll speak at town meeting after the presentation from Mr. Canty. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And like an SNL skit, point, counterpoint. And I'll use discipline here. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommended that town meeting does not approve Article 8B Nuclear Stabilization Fund by a vote of two votes in favor, 12 votes against, and zero abstentions. Many of the committee members felt that the current budget shortfall was cause for pause, a little belt tightening at this point, and therefore doesn't recommend putting 500,000 dollars of funds into the Nuclear Stabilization Fund at this time, this, in this budget year.
Thank you, Mr. Nierman. And at this time, we're going to move on to Article 9, Capital Improvements. We have the A items, which are majority vote, the B items, which require two-thirds. And historically, we would take all of the items in the A group and vote them together, and then all of the items in the B group. However, this year, I received several motions to divide the A group. And so the manner in which we're going to proceed is for every item that was part of a request to divide, we will vote it separately, and then we will proceed to vote all of the remaining items. For Article, for Group B, we'll vote the four of them separately. So in keeping with the practice of mirroring this to town meeting, the first item, again, unless we receive more motions, would be Article 9A17, and it's a motion to purchase a school bus. Mr. Nierman. Did you want to make general comments on Article 9, or did you want to speak to an item?
No, I, no, I don't. I don't want to make any additional comments.
So, purchase the school bus is Article 9A17. Dr. Campbell is available to answer in advance of town meeting. Also tonight, we have the Plymouth School Committee Chair, Michelle Badger, here with us. The next would be Item A24, which is to replace three 2007 six-wheel dump trucks. And William Coyle, Director of the Department of Public Works, is available to answer any questions. And then we would move to Item A38, the Master Plan for Forges Field. We have Anne Slosser, who's the Recreation Director, and she's available to answer your questions. Then we move to Item A45, Runway 624 and Taxi Way Extension A. And once again, Matthew Cardillo, the Airport Manager, is available to answer questions. And then we would move, absent any other motions to divide, we would then move to vote all of the remaining items, which are A1 through A16, A18 through A23, A25 to A37, and A39 to A44. So that's the total, and we would vote those as well. And that's the A group, again, a majority. And then we would go to the B group. And the first motion is for town wharf rehabilitation. Mr. Nierman.
Article 9?
Article 9B1. So for Article 9B1, Capital Improvements, we had the overall vote from the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Yeah, we voted them in two batches of general fund items and enterprise fund items. Okay, so the Advisory and Finance Committee voted 13 votes for, zero against, excuse me, one against and zero abstentions to approve the general fund items totaling 13 million 301,499 dollars to be funded with 9 million 126,626 dollars from free cash, 1.5 million raised and appropriate from levy, 89,873 from fire prevention revolving fund, 100,000 dollars from the recreation revolving fund, 215,000 from the waterways fund, and 2 million 270,000 dollars from borrowing.
And to queue you, for those who can support us prior to town meeting, for the town wharf rehab on B1, Chad Hunter is our harbor master. On B2, South Elementary, we have Matthew Durkey from the Plymouth Public Schools. He's the Director of Facilities. For B3, the Effluent Tertiary Filter, we have, again, William Coyle, Director of Department of Public Works. And finally, for B4, we once again have water system improvements. Again, the Department of Public Works, William Coyle, our Director. And that concludes the nine. We're going to move to Article 10, and that is a conveyance of tax titled property to the Affordable Housing Trust. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 10 by a vote of 10 in favor, zero against, and three abstentions. Approval of this article will transfer the listed parcels from the Town Treasurer to the Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of affordable housing. These parcels were taken by the town through a tax lien proceeding.
Patrick Farah is the Planning Technician, available to answer questions. Article 11, once again, a conveyance of tax titled property to the Conservation Commission. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 11 by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will transfer the listed parcels from the Town Treasurer to the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes. These parcels were taken by the town through a tax lien proceeding.
Thank you. Once again, Patrick Farah is our Planning Technician, available to answer questions. And then we move on to Article 12, if the consent agenda fails. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 12 by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will enable the town to accept State Highway Chapter 90 funds for repairs and reconstruction of public roads. While the estimated amount of Chapter 90 funds for fiscal 2025 was not known at the time of this report was prepared, Plymouth did receive more than 1.59 million dollars for fiscal year 2024. The town expects a similar amount in fiscal 2025 unless there is a change in policy and/or the state's financial health.
Thank you. This is a majority vote, and again, 13, if consent agenda fails, the Town Promotion Fund. Mr. Nierman.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 13 by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will allow expenditures from the town's promotion fund. The promotion fund, created by special legislation, is funded with 45% of the proceeds from the hotel motel tax. The Visitors Services Bureau Board oversees expenditures from this fund. Expenditures include funding special events and celebrations. The Town Promotion Fund is also used to pay a marketing and promotions contract with C Plymouth/Destination Plymouth, which provides the town with television and print advertising all around the country and abroad, maintains a waterfront information booth, and provides for the operation of the C Plymouth website.
Thank you. And Article 14 is to amend the zoning bylaw, accessory dwelling unit ADU. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 14 by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will amend the zoning bylaw to allow accessory dwelling units by right. The intent is to increase the number of moderately priced, long-term rental units in the town and to allow residents on fixed incomes who wish to remain in their homes the option to supplement their income through the rental of such a unit.
Following Mr. Nierman's presentation, David Peck, a member of the Planning Board, will speak to town meeting. This evening, we have Lee Hartman. will speak to Town Meeting. This evening, we have Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development. Mr. Hartman, anything you care to add?
Not at this moment.
And we also have a motion to amend Article 14. William Abbott, Precinct 16, moves to amend Article 14. And I want to say to those of you who are in the room or may be following on a website, the amend, motion to amend that's contained in the packet may not be the final form. Mr. Abbott and I have discussed that, and he is going to speak to his motion to amend, and there's also going to be a graphic that will be shown that has been provided by Mr. Abbott. William Abbott, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bill Abbott. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 16, and my motion is to adopt an amendment to this article. I've lived for 50 years amid the ponds of South Plymouth, and over the years, our neighborhood association has regularly tested the ponds and make up my community. And I'm aware that other neighborhood associations have done likewise in their areas. Unfortunately, the test results for pollution that is degrading our ponds get steadily worse each year that we test for one major reason. Nutrients are excessively and increasingly building up in our groundwater. We see the evidence from tangled weeds on the sandy bottom of once clear ponds, choked motorboat propellers, fish kills, foul smells, and more frequent algae blooms that cloud our ponds, closing them down. In fact, ponds like Long Pond, which had never experienced a cyanobacteria algae bloom, as far as I can tell in history, did experience its first bloom last summer. And it's a sign of bad things to come. Falling property values are sure to follow, as have happened elsewhere where these problems exist. And I believe we absolutely must take remedial action to reduce the flow of nutrients in our ponds, or we shall lose them to the pollution of over vegetation and algae. The recreational value will shrink. They will turn into shallow, ugly precursors of swamps. It's that simple. And we're moving into a dire crisis, and this is the background for my amendment. ADUs will introduce a second potential dwelling unit onto every residential property where the owner chooses to build an ADU in his house or as a separate unit. All of these new dwellings will require septic service, except those in the residential zones like R20 and R40, which are largely sewered. They're serviced by a wastewater treatment plant. The rural residential zone, however, which stretches broadly across the town, contains most of our 300-plus ponds, and is wide open to these new ADUs. If this article passes without this amendment overnight, we will have created the potential for greatly increasing the septic effluent pouring down through the sand into our groundwater. The problem is nitrogen. A perfectly functioning septic Title V system does nothing to remove nitrogen. It all goes into the pond. 90 to 95% of the nitrogen going into our ponds is coming from wastewater from Title V systems. The algae is building up, and is now rapidly being helped by climate change. It's out of control, and many think it may even be too late for our ponds to recover. But we must try, we must exercise a right of self-defense. And my amendment will put the brakes on increased nitrogen pollution of our ponds by not allowing any ADU to be placed in the rural residential zone, which is our unsewered zone, unless it is served by a wastewater treatment plant, which does typically, in fact, most always remove the nitrogen. Or a septic system, which has been upgraded now with modern technology to remove nitrogen, not yet available in Plymouth. The state is now rolling out this new technology in septic systems on Cape Cod, which is a few years ahead of Plymouth, on solving this problem of its ponds, and you can be sure that the new technology will eventually arrive in Plymouth. What a tragedy if it gets here too late, if we've already lost our ponds to choking algae blooms and tangled vegetation. The bottom line, and in summary, if my amendment is voted, is that we will put a temporary hold on the building of ADUs in the rural residential zone until either a wastewater treatment plant extends service to these areas, or the new septic system technology is finally, is mandated by the state to apply to Plymouth and put into effect by our Board of Health. If our health board goes this route, the ADU bylaw can then be amended to allow ADUs in the rural residential zone as of right, because with the new septic systems replacing the Title V systems, which are not doing the job, we will no longer be pouring nitrogen into our ponds. So please join with me to save our ponds and support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott, and we're going to bring in Catherine Holmes. She's a Town Meeting Member. Before she speaks, I just wanted to thank Mr. Abbott and also all of the other Town Meeting Members who have contacted me prior to this evening regarding motions. It is very important that if you wish to make a motion, and regardless of where somebody may be on it, we want to make sure that the motion can be heard. And in order to be heard, it's got to be in proper form. So, for example, with Mr. Abbott's motion, Director of Planning Development, Lee Hartman, Town Council, Kathleen, Kate is going to be also working with us, working with me, and with Mr. Abbott, and so the four of us will determine what is a motion in proper form here, and we'll get this to Town Meeting. But often, it is not as simple as just getting up at Town Meeting floor. You may be ruled out of order, not because you don't have a good motion, but because it's not in proper form. So if you want to be successful in moving forward on your particular motion, the sooner you get it to me, the better. We have a deadline of next Wednesday at 3:00 PM if you want your motion to get into the final motion book. And you always have a better chance of having your motion heard if you get into the motion book. So, again, thank you. And also, for those of us that like to understand the quantum of vote and why, I asked the question of this Town Meeting, aren't zoning bylaw amendments two-thirds? And the Director of Planning Development advised me that Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020 was a housing choice act that does change the quantum of vote on some amendments to the zoning bylaw, and in this case, it's a majority vote. And we'll now go to Catherine Holmes. Catherine, welcome.
Thank you. I, I just have a quick question. So I think Mr. Abbott's motion is a good one, and I think there's a real concern around the septic systems that we have here in Plymouth. And is there anyone from the Planning Board that can talk to when they think that there is going to be the requirement for us to switch over to this enhanced septic system? And are we looking to do it any sooner than when the state mandates it? Because I know that there are towns on the Cape that are already doing this. The, the dollar amount is staggering to what will be required of the resident to put in this enhanced septic system. Knowing that we, we are, we're kind of going to have to do it, can anybody speak to what that is? Because I think that's really going to, you know, when and what that's going to look like, and how, how is our plans in place, or are plans in the works for us to enhance the sewer system down in the southern parts of Plymouth, where, you know, we are, we're not able to be on public sewage?
So we have a couple of people here. We have Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development.
Thank you. So the purview for the septic system is the Board of Health, not the Planning Board. And I would say that from what I've seen and heard, we're probably talking at least five years out before the town of Plymouth would be looking at those advanced requirements.
Catherine Holmes, thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just have a follow-up, if I could, please, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
So when we're talking about five years out, is that a, is that a requirement for us to potentially replace our septic systems in Plymouth? Or is there any, were any plans in place to put any type of mini-septic systems or septic by, you know, it's any ability for us to connect to the existing septic systems in anywhere in Plymouth?
So actually, interestingly enough, and I know Bill Coyle's here, he may want to speak to it, but we, they are looking at the possibility. So, well, Bill, I'll let you go.
William Coyle is the Director of Department of Public Works. Welcome back, Mr. Coyle.
Hey, thank you, sir. Just briefly, I can tell you that the, the town of Plymouth is currently undertaking a comprehensive wastewater management plan, and we had a meeting today that many of us participated in. And this is a study that Weston Sampson is working on for us. And we are looking at many different items as part of that plan. And we are looking at where septic systems are located, where there's a need to potentially extend town, town sewer. Obviously, in some areas of the town, it would be very difficult to get to, and those particular areas, the consultant would be looking at whether or not there would be potential for satellite treatment facilities in those areas. Where, so, you know, it's going to take some time to go through all of these different, different options and criteria. The, the other thing to look at is that some of the properties where they may be more remote with septic systems are unlikely to be sewered. In those particular cases, I would anticipate that at some point in the future, there's a possibility that, you know, IA systems would be required. Again, that's something that DEP would be mandating, not, at this point, not the town, and that would be a Board of Health question. But we are looking at it, and so it's something that, you know, there'll be more to come over the next, next year or so.
Thank you, William Coyle, Director, Department of Public Works. And Ms. Holmes, I don't want to get on this too long, because we're really talking about the accessory dwelling unit and Mr. Abbott's motion to amend.
In order to ask Mr. Mr. Abbott's, if we were to pass Mr. Abbott's motion, I think there might be, there might be enough activity that we would say that if you were to upgrade your sewage system in a remote area, if you were in a position where you had to have this accessory-type dwelling, then, you know, maybe we could put a clause in there that says that, that those people that have improved their septic system, that they would be able to move forward with an accessory dwelling. That's, that's where I'm going with this, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion on Article 14? If not, we're going to move to Article 15, expand the Historic District, and Mr. Neerman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article 15 with a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will expand the current downtown and waterfront district to include Yungan Street, Lincoln Street, Bradford Street, including the Plymouth Marina, Plymouth Yacht Club, Nathaniel Morton School, and 11 Lincoln Street, and all properties located within this area.
Michael Tubin will make a presentation. He is Chair of the Historic District Commission. He's not here with us this evening, so we will move on now to Article 16, and we're going to begin with Article 16A. And the Article 16 items are those being presented by the Community Preservation Committee. We have the Chair, Bill Cohen. But first, I would state to you that we have a motion from Christopher Merrill, who moves the town appropriate the sum of $3 million. And since he's deferring this at Town Meeting to the presentation, we're going to go to the presentation now from Mr. Cohen. Ms. Cohen, welcome this evening. He is the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Good evening, Bill Cohen with the Community Preservation Committee. I'd just like to draw your attention to a briefing material that's been sent out to all the Town Meeting Members. This material is a combination, a compiling of everything the CPC gets when it makes an analysis of an application and a recommendation to Town Meeting. It's to complement the material that has been sent to you by the Finance Department, and I'd like to first turn to Article 16A. 16A begins in the briefing material on page one, and if we had a remote here, I can take you through this. And 16A is Affordable Housing Recommendation to Town Meeting. It's an article that is setting aside $3 million to be granted to the Plymouth Area Coalition. This is to renovate an existing building at 54 Industrial Park Road. The building will, after these renovations are made, the Community Preservation Committee and the Town of Plymouth will receive a deed restriction for 30 years on the property. We also have an agreement with the owners of the property. If the property was, or the organization was ceased to exist, the building would be sold and the proceeds would be returned to the town for the purpose of affordable housing. This is a similar agreement that we've had in other circumstances where we're developing emergency housing. The zoning has been approved by the town. The zoning for this use is, will be taking place in the industrial park. It was a former office building that will be renovated into residential and an educational facility. On each floor of this building, there'll be an area where clients meet with their staff people to help them with educational services, to help them address the issues of homelessness. The people that are being housed in this unit are for emergency housing, for families that are, that lose a home. So if you have a child, you lose a home, this is what this facility is focused its attention on, housing people for those purposes, but with also, combined with educational services to help them with the tools that they need to find permanent housing and the skill sets needed to sustain that housing, jobs, and things of that nature. Not only will there be educational staff there during the day helping the residents, but also there'll be security and overnight staff on the property. This building will be located, as I mentioned, on Industrial Parkway, 54 Industrial Parkway in Plymouth, in the industrial park. Now, when the industrial park was built in 1964, it was isolated away from a lot of services. It's now 2024, and there's quite a bit of services located in this area. There's intermodal transportation, there's, GATRA is going by the building, there is the train station in Kingston, so it's very close to the highway and intermodal transportation. So as people start to get a footing on the circumstance that led to homelessness and finding housing and finding employment, having transportation options is critical. Plus, this location now is in contact with quite a bit of services to the location. I'd like to introduce Sue Jovanetti, the President of the Plymouth Area Coalition, who is the applicant, and she can walk you through the next few slides.
Welcome, Sue Jovanetti, Detective Director, Plymouth Area Coalition for Homeless. For those of you that are joining us, you're watching the Town Meeting Preview, and go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you. It's Sue Jovanetti, Plymouth Area Coalition, I'm the CEO. What you're looking on in this particular slide is the front of the building of 54 Industrial Park Road. It's our hope to put in 26 units of housing for, emergency assistance housing for families who have found themselves homeless. On-site would be case management, educational program, as Bill had mentioned. Among that would be workforce development, and certainly all the basic needs support that would be necessary to support the families that would be part of the program. This has been a proven model. Since 1982, EA Sheltering has been a Commonwealth of Massachusetts program, and the Plymouth Area Coalition has been part of, we've been running the Pilgrim's Hope Shelter on Route 80 since 1994, so we have over 30 years of experience doing that. Okay, great. So as I mentioned, 26 families with children, always with children. This is not for individuals who find themselves homeless. This is a temporary situation. It's, it's not considered by any means to be permanent housing. Our priority, number one, is to address all the basic needs of homeless families while helping, helping them transition to permanent housing that they can afford and, most importantly, sustain. The, it's modeled after, as I mentioned, Pilgrim's Hope, where we, since 1994, have had 1,300 families that we've been supported and have then gone on to permanent housing. Each, each family benefits from a private bedroom and shared living space, which it's, it's congreg- space, which it's, it's congregate living. So they share community rooms and kitchen, kitchen facilities so that they have that experience of day-to-day living as they would in their own home. There's responsibility tied to participation in the EA Shelter Program. The dedicate, so we're talking about dedicated educational program. Absolutely. The backbone of the Plymouth Area Coalition Program, EA Shelter Program, is education. It's what we do to enable families to move beyond their temporary situation as homeless. So to that end, we do, we do planned programming for job coaching, childcare, personal finance, nutrition, personal health. And that continues also to personal enrichment activity like yoga, just to look at the whole person and enable them to feel better about themselves and, and improve their situation for their family. There will be childcare, there'll be a childcare space within the building, outdoor play areas that will be fenced and will be the current style of play area so that it'll be safe and secure for all the children in the families. And very important to know that this is a closed referral process. Families are referred to the Plymouth Area Coalition by the Office, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. What that means is that a family finds themselves homeless, they go to the state office, they present their situation, and then the family places them in an available unit of EA Sheltering. Every, very important to stress is that every effort is made to place those families in their home community if there is a shelter or within 20 miles of their home community. Currently, the town of Plymouth does not have an EA Shelter Program. The Plymouth Area Coalition Pilgrim's Hope Shelter is located over the line in Kingston on Apostle, just under Three Acre Apostle in, on Route 80. What did I miss here? Okay, so there's that. And as far as our plans for this facility, we did purchase it last May of 2023. Bill mentioned this in his presentation. It, it checks all the boxes for us. It's right on public transportation, the GATRA runs by, medical offices are, are down the street, childcare is down the street, Boys and Girls Club is there. There are a few different schools in the area. It, it really offers a great deal to the families that we would serve. It has job opportunities, being right close to the, within the, the footprint of the Plymouth Industrial Park. It is on the main thoroughfare, so it's not tucked away deep in the industrial park, but rather in a stately building right on the main road. What's the property building? So we, we have very respectfully asked for CPC funding. We are also have applied to the state for state funding of the, of the project, and certainly private grants and donations are all part of that development project. We're working with Development Council on that. And as far as how we operate, we do operate on a state contract, which is the predominant part of our budget. And then fundraising and, and grants support that so that we can supply all of the services that we do. In addition to the sheltering piece, we also have other basic needs supports, food pantry. So the existing, existing building will be renovated with no changes to the existing footprint. We will be within the building closing what's more like an atrium format to the building. We will be closing those floors over. They'll, there's four floors, the lower level floor, which has a street entry, will be where the congregate kitchen will be, and also the education program will operate from there. The upper three floors will be family units on each floor. The family units will be, let me go back to that for one minute. The, on each floor, there'll be a meeting room where, where clients would meet with their caseworkers or rehousing specialists. There's, it's very simplistic in design. It was formerly a office building, which for the last, my understanding is, six years has been, been empty. So it's been underutilized property. The, so there will be some changes, but there's no changes to the, the plumbing bathrooms will all stay in the same locations. We're not making alterations in that area. There will be an elevator installed, and, and that's for the purposes of ensuring that it is completely ADA. That's extremely important when we're, we're providing for all the services that the families we, we have in the program need. There will be some dormering on the upper level so that there'll be, the units will have more space. The elevator will go in, again, that's an ADA, oh, we're improving the, the building systems as well and, and the fire safety. We're working with a local architect and a seller construction. We've been working with them from even before we purchased the property to ensure that this property was a wise choice. Now, what else can I, this is, oh, I hit the wrong way. I'm sorry. We've, we've been in this, we've been since 1985, the Plymouth Area Coalition has been serving homeless families. We've been at the Pilgrim's Hope site since 1994. I think we, we have a proven reputation, the, the plan, the, the format of the program works. We have been very successful in helping to provide people with permanent housing and supporting them as provided through the EA Shelter Program with two years of guidance after they leave the program to ensure that they continue to meet their needs as, as homeowners in their own, whether it be apartment dwelling or what their next situation is. So we're, we're following them for two years after that. It, yes, we do manage a hotel site in Kingston. We were asked by the state if we would consider that to help the state meet, meet the needs that the state has been faced with in the last two years. We've been able to do that very successfully. It, it's important to note that the motel sites, at any time when the state had gone into motel sites, those were emergency, very temporary situations. The purchase and the planning of a 26-unit site in Plymouth has been a long-term goal for the Coalition. It has nothing to do with the current situation in the state or the use of hotels as emergency, as a means of meeting an emergency need. This need is important to the town of Plymouth. It's important to all our families. I, that's what I can, it's been a long-term goal for, far before the current needs of the state. And I think I, my deepest, I, I really can't see the picture that's screened behind these words here, but it's a picture of two children with a big cardboard box. And, and short story of that is, I bought a bunch of furniture for the shelter on Route 80 and threw the box, one of the boxes into the, the living room where the kids were playing. And I went back an hour and a half later, and they had, they had flipped it upside down. Someone had helped them, and they cut a door in it and a couple of windows, and they colored it, and they, they made a, a house by themselves, four and five years old. That speaks to the need and the innate feeling that even when you're four and five, you know you need a home. You deserve a house over your, a roof over your head. And I, I just have to tell you, that, that picture, I feel badly, it's screened a little too much because that, that's what this is all about. Plymouth, Plymouth children, when their parents find themselves unable to afford housing, deserve the opportunity to be placed in temporary shelter within their own community. So that's the essence of, of our story and our ask, and I, I hope that you'll very respectfully and carefully consider our request.
Thank you, Susan Jovanetti. She is the Chief Executive Officer for the Plymouth Area Coalition for the Homeless. At town meeting, we do welcome petition and presentations up to 15 minutes. Mr. Cohen?
Just to finish up on Sue's article, this is a rendering of the front elevation of this building, very residential feel. As you can see, here's the side elevation. The lower level is the access for the educational areas, followed by another elevation from this, trying to keep the building in a condition that is very similar to what it is today, on the same footprint, with the very homey feel, residential feel to it, and the back elevation. And then here's the interior areas where the individual units will be housed, 26 of them. And on each level, there is an area where staff meet with clients to work on their daily criteria that they have to be involved in in terms of the educational programming. So that shows you how the building is laid out. This is the lower level where the classrooms are. And that pretty much completes the design of the location. That takes us to Article 16B.
William Cohen, thank you very much for your presentation. But now, at town meeting, we would next go to the Advisory and Finance Committee, who provide their opposition. But before we do that, I just want to announce, at town meeting, we're required to recess in two hours. We have now come to two hours at tonight's preview, but we're not bound by the rules for town meeting. But I just want everybody to know that at town meeting, regardless of where we are on the warrant, regardless of whether we are particular article, when it comes time to take a recess, we're going to take a recess and follow the rules. But not tonight. So, Mr. Neiman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for that. And the Advisory and Finance Committee recommends that town meeting does not approve Article 6A, 16A, with a vote of six in favor, eight opposing, and zero abstentions. The opinions expressed during our long session on this particular article, they're very varied. There are too many for me to name, but the most troubling one for us is that the Coalition is asking for $3 million from the taxpayers of the town of Plymouth. And as Ms. Jovanetti actually put on her presentation, the state chooses who comes to our shelter here. And there is no guarantee that a single resident from Plymouth will be in that shelter, and that was the driving force for our voting against.
Thank you. This particular article gives you an idea of the flow at town meeting. First, we have Christopher Merrill making the motion. Then we have a presentation from Community Preservation and from his chair, followed by the petitioner. And then we hear from the Advisory and Finance when they don't support it. And then we go into speakers. And I want to talk briefly about speakers at town meeting. Town meeting has a rule that speaking priority is granted to town meeting members. Prior to tonight, I have received requests to be on the speaker list from town meeting members, from Plymouth residents who are not town meeting members, and from people who are not Plymouth residents. And so at town meeting, I will first go to those people who are town meeting members. I will then go, if there is still time, to people who are Plymouth residents. And then I would go to a non-resident, but it would only be with the consent of town meeting as to whether a non-resident addresses Plymouth Town Meeting. Are there any other comments or questions with respect to Article 16A? If not, we're going to move on to Article 16B. Yes, Mr. Cohen, you can welcome back. We have the Affordable Housing, 132 Court Street. Mr. Neiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16B by a vote of 12 in favor, one opposed, and zero abstentions. The approval of this article will authorize a grant to Regreco, Inc., for the purpose of constructing six affordable deed restricted units at 132 Court Street.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yes, if you're following at home in your green CPA book, you'll find it starting on page 50, 37 is for 16B. And Article 16B is an application from a developer here in town. We've worked with this developer on two different occasions, one at State Road, where we put in 26 affordable units a few years back, and most recently on Cava Road heading into West Plymouth, we worked with this developer, building another additional 17 affordable units on West Plymouth. And this one is for 132 Court Street. It's a request for $960,000. At 132, 134 Court Street, this is the location, the most recently it was utilized as our packed television station. There was a senior center out front. These were buildings that were residential units that were on this location for many years and, and most recently had been used for town purposes. The buildings were sold. The developer acquired the property, went through a permitting process called inclusionary zoning, where he built 40 apartment units. He's required to keep 10% affordable, so he's building four units affordable that he's required to do. But he's coming back to the Community Preservation Committee, and he's willing to take additional six units in the complex, indeed restrict them down to affordable at the cost of $960,000. The developer will own the building. They'll be required to maintain the building and handle all of the costs associated with the complex. The housing authority would qualify people to live in these units. And it's in a downtown location. It's a quick to services. It's on the GATRA bus route. We find that very appealing as a committee, that we look at affordable housing around the town of Plymouth and look at opportunities to address different demographics within the community of affordable housing. When, earlier tonight, we heard about emergency housing. Now we're hearing about workforce housing. Later we'll be talking about downsizing seniors. So this is just another attempt to address affordable housing, but not just generally, but specifically going after a demographic that's looking for housing, and this would be people in the downtown location. Also, the building has a look to it that is reminiscent of some of the buildings that were along Court Street at this location, the architectural style, the historical character of the neighborhood in keeping. This is very similar to the Davis Manor that was up on the property. Most likely, people remember it as the old packed television building. This is the interior units. They're one-bedroom units, and they're approximately 900 square feet with a little kitchen and a bath and a living and eating room, dining room. And once my PowerPoint starts to respond, there it is, there it again. There's the front elevation looking towards Court Street. Here's a color rendering of it on Court Street, very typical of what you would have seen along Court Street as you came in from Route 44 and headed north into North Plymouth. Again, the Community Preservation Committee is recommending Article 16B at a cost of $960,000.
Thank you. No further discussion. We're going to move on to 16C, and that is Affordable Housing, Cranbury Commons at Redbrook. Mr. Neiman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16C by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will grant $4 million to the Grantham Group for the purposes of constructing 62 units in a multifamily complex building for local senior citizens. Our committee initially voted not to recommend this article, and part of it was that there was a lot of opposition from within the neighborhoods on the location. And we heard this article right as there was a change of location that was offered by the Grantham Group. So we were not real comfortable at that point, plus we didn't feel like there was a good enough deal for the taxpayers of this town. So we initially rejected, and then they came back and with a better package for us, with 10 more units and a location that was vetted out, that the local residents had their say. And our committee felt very comfortable unanimously approving this.
Thank you. And Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. If you're following along on your CPA handbook, it's on page 55. And again, it's a recommendation for affordable housing, as Mr. Newman has pointed out. As Mr. Newman has pointed out, this application came to us at fifty-two units, and there was an improvement to sixty-two units of deed-restricted units. The request is for approximately four million dollars. This is affordable housing at Cranberry Common at Redbrook, and they're age-restricted, sixty-two and older. It would be an apartment building. Forty-three of these units would be deed-restricted affordable to seniors between thirty and eighty percent of the area mean income, AMI. You'll hear a lot about AMI, and one of the things that CPC and some of the partners that it works with is trying to get AMI down to a lower level. Right now, traditionally, you see them at eighty percent, which would mean you'd have to make about ninety thousand dollars to afford the unit. So obviously, at eighty percent, they're not terribly affordable. Getting the AMI down to thirty percent is you're looking at an income of around thirty-two thousand dollars a year, or getting it down to sixty percent of area-wide mean income, you're getting down to income levels around sixty-four thousand dollars a year. So you can see where, how important it is to get that AMI down. The committee was impressed with that. All sixty-two units will qualify towards the town's Town of Plymouth subsidized housing inventory, SHI. You'll hear a lot about that, SHI. We're going to get a full count at sixty-two at this location. We're also going to be able to provide, at the crest of the town, through the Board of Selectmen, local preference for the residents, up to seventy percent. The units can be occupied by local residents. The building will have a management company that will be building it and managing the property, the Grantham Group. We're going to hear from the Grantham Group shortly. They'll have community managers on site, and they will own and maintain and take care of the building. The other thing that's important to note about the Grantham Group, who Redbrook is partnering with, is their ability to build financial partners. The project around twenty-five thousand dollars, they'll be working with state and federal tax credit opportunities and local state housing trust and Mass Executive Office of Housing and livable home funds. This is very critical to maximize what money we have here in Plymouth. We put up four million dollars to do something like this, and we're working with an organization that can bring in other funds to maximize the effect. That's something, that is something the committee is always looking for, leveraging our fund and partnering with organizations that can make that happen. I'd like to introduce Dan Gorska from Redbrook. He's going to walk you through a series of slides.
Thank you, Dan. Daniel Gorska is from AD Makepeace, and I understand he's being joined by a non-resident from the Grantham Group. So at Town Meeting, I will ask, if there's no objection from Town Meeting, we will also hear from the non-resident. Welcome, Mr. Gorska.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Dan Gorska, Vice President of Redbrook in South Plymouth in AD Makepeace Community. And I'm here this evening with Walter Ohanian, the Managing Director of the Grantham Group. I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to present this unique partnership known as Article sixteen C. Article sixteen C allows the Grantham Group, the AD Makepeace Company, and you, the town of Plymouth, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to provide sixty-two deeply affordable units in perpetuity for our senior population in need of our help. This opportunity allows Plymouth seniors to age in place, be part of a new village in Plymouth, and allows them to maintain their sense of community with dignity. Article sixteen C will provide a sixty-two one-bedroom unit of income-restricted senior housing for ages sixty-two plus. All units are eligible for the town's subsidized housing inventory, SHI, and will be affordable in perpetuity. When requested by the Select Board, the initial lease-up will provide a seventy percent local preference. These units are all targeted to low-income seniors. When creating affordable housing, the requirement is eighty percent area median income. Lower area median income means lower income requirements, and ultimately means lower rents. This project provides deep affordability, and most of the units are well below the eighty percent AMI requirement. Article sixteen C will create nineteen units at or below eighty percent, thirty units at or below sixty percent, and thirteen units at or below thirty percent. For perspective, as Bill alluded to, the income restriction for one-person household at thirty percent AMI is thirty-two thousand dollars. This is a senior living on a small income, most likely Social Security. When the project was first presented, there was some opposition, based on proximity to existing homeowners and parking concerns. Over the last several months, our team has attended a variety of meetings, CPC, the Redbrook Community, Planning Board, Select Board, Advisory and Finance. The outcome of those meetings made this article stronger, and we thank all of those who participated. The building location moved, was relocated, now adjacent to the Redbrook Apartments, reoriented to minimize view impacts. Parking concerns were addressed, and unit count was increased by ten. All ten are above the initial commitment, and that no additional cost to the town. For those who are familiar with the Redbrook community, the project is located at the northeast corner of River Runway and Wareham Road, shown on the plan this evening, and this is centrally located near the Village Green and Community Amenities. The AD Makepeace Company will donate the land to the Grantham Group and provide initial site work and utility connections. The next series of slides are just imagery of the building. I'll just pause for a moment, just to say something about each one, but it won't be too long. So this is a bird's-eye view at the corner of Wareham Road and River Runway, looking to your northeast. So you can see the main drive is off of Wareham Road and the parking lot in the building there. These are just imagerys, perspectives, as you're going up and down Wareham Road. This is us traveling south. The building's in front of you. Further down south of the road, right adjacent to the entrance to the apartments, and that's the building in front of you there. You can see it's a three-story, two- and three-story building, three stories in the middle, two-story bookends. Just another image. This is at the main entrance, looking into the facility. Just another image. This is if you're familiar with the area next to our meeting house. And this is people I view at the corner of River Runway and Wareham Road, looking into the facility. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Walter Ohanian from the Grantham Group to discuss some details. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Neiman.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Dan. Hello, everyone. My name is Walter Ohanian, and I am the Managing Director for the Grantham Group. I appreciate you allowing me to discuss Cranberry Commons, the sixty-two-unit affordable housing community for seniors. So Grantham Group is a Massachusetts-based developer and management agent to a number of affordable housing communities in Massachusetts. We have properties as far west as North Hampton and Belchertown, in central Mass with locations in Webster, Worcester, and Marlborough, Mass, and in southeastern Mass with communities in Attleboro, in our newest affordable housing community for seniors in Situate. We have developed and managed over five hundred units in Massachusetts, all of which qualify for the state's forty-B subsidized housing inventory. Being a Massachusetts-based company with over twenty-five years' experience in this arena, we've gained strong relationships with various cities, towns, and governmental agencies. During the Baker administration, we were recognized by the governor for our work in affordable housing. I know Dan reviewed the outside concept of the community, but I did want to give a review, a few highlights of the interiors. Besides having the sixty-two one-bedroom units, we'll also have common areas for the residents to congregate. These include a living room with a gas fireplace, and a multipurpose room for residents to use for doing puzzles, enjoying a group meal, or coordinating a bingo game. The building will be built to the Energy Stretch Code, and will be served by an elevator to get residents from floor to floor. Having these common spaces, it will help residents facilitate socialization and be part of their own community within Cranberry Commons. The tremendous benefit this project location has is its access to the nearby Redbrook Village Center, a short flatwalk area to the community gardens, the bakery, the restaurants, the YMCA, the physical therapy offices, and the doctor's offices by Beth Israel. The sixty-two one-bedroom apartments will be approximately six hundred and ninety square feet, and they'll include everything a resident needs to live independently in the unit. It will have a stove, dishwasher, refrigerator, washer and dryer. These units are designed with the understanding of the resident who will be living in the unit. They will have an easy step-in shower, ample-sized doorways for walkers or wheelchairs, and walk-in closets. The apartments will have large windows, making the units bright and cheerful. We are here today to ask Town Meeting to approve four million dollars of CPA funds towards this great project. The other funding sources include an in-kind contribution by AD Makepeace for the land, making the land pad ready for construction, and allowing the site to tie into existing utilities. In addition, the lion's share of the funding is actually coming from the state in the form of an award of both federal and state low-income housing tax credits, home funds, and other state funding subsidies. In addition, the project will also take on conventional debt, and the total project cost is just under thirty million dollars. You may ask, what is the four million in CPA funds actually doing for this project? It will be used towards construction costs and allowing the project to take on less conventional debt than a typical market-rate housing project. If you look at the graph, on the left side, you'll see where the rents would be, received by tenants if this was a market-rate project. The graph then shows various affordable options, and the gray area that you see shows the amount of rent which is needed to be made up to be able to get up to the market-rate rents. The graph with the star on it is Grantham's plan, and it shows units at eighty percent, sixty percent, and thirty percent. And you'll notice that the gray area is approximately seventy thousand dollars per month less in rents compared to an all-market-rate community. When I go to this next slide, it will show you the yearly decrease in rents, which equates to eight hundred and forty thousand dollars per year in reduced rents. And when I go to the next slide, you'll see the five-year savings these residents will receive is approximately four point two million dollars. Again, CPA funds we are requesting will go towards construction costs, allowing the projects to offer units at a deeper level of affordability. Forty-three of the sixty-two units are dedicated to residents at or below sixty percent AMI. Thirteen of these units will be at thirty percent. As I previously mentioned, we have a project in Situate, Mass, which falls under the same area as Plymouth does when it uses AMI. Our average resident who qualifies for these units in Situate, in the thirty percent units, pays an average rent of just under four hundred dollars. You may wonder who the residents are who will move into this community. These are your neighbors, possibly people who have lived in Plymouth their entire life but can no longer afford to live in Plymouth for a variety of reasons. Possibly people who had to give up their living arrangements long ago and might be living with their children in town. These may be your loved ones, your parents, who are looking to bring, you're looking to bring closer, so you can help them with their needs during their golden years. But ultimately, these will be people who just don't have the financial resources to live in a community as beautiful as Plymouth and Redbrook without a rent-reduced option. At a CPA cost of just under sixty-five thousand dollars per unit, to get a significant amount of deeply discounted units, I'm hoping you'll see the benefits of voting yes on Article sixteen C. Thank you.
And any further discussion on Article? Again, these petition of presentations coming from Community Preservation will be up to fifteen minutes. And now we're going to move on to Article sixteen D, open space, Jenny Pond. Mr. Neiman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends Town Meeting approve Article sixteen D with a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will create, improve, and enhance the trails along Town Brook. The funding will be used to upgrade the existing paths, electrical wiring and conduit, lighting, landscaping, drainage, stone walls, and aesthetics of the Town Brook Trail from Main Street Extension Bridge to Brewster Gardens. Supplemental funding to replace the footbridge at Jenny Pond, along with associated ADA sidewalks and lighting.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. Article sixteen C, excuse me, Article sixteen D begins on page ninety-four, and it is a request for CPA funds for the restoration, rehabilitation of the Jenny Pond Trail area from Town Brook up to Jenny Pond, from the Main Street Extension Bridge at Brewster Gardens. The applicant of this application is the Town of Plymouth Department of Energy and Environment. The Town Brook Trail improvements are at three million dollars. This is to focus our attention from Jenny, from Brewster Gardens up to the Jenny Pond area, and the improvements of the trail that link the two. There have been quite a bit of improvements along our Town Brook over the years. We've been partnering with, for the last twenty-five years, we've been partnering with the Department of Energy and Environment under the leadership of David Gould, looking at grant opportunities when we buy land or take down, buy a dam, or find the federal money to take down the dam, or expand our preservation and restoration work along our Town Brook. There's been quite a bit of work done over the last twenty-five years. This is a culmination of that. We're going back and addressing an area of the Town Brook that has not been dealt with since the nineteen-sixties in terms of its access and its trails and its path. So the focus of this will be improving these trails along our Town Brook up to Jenny Pond. And this will be coupled with a series of other activities that we have asked Town Meeting for CPA funding, for improving the dredging of the Jenny Pond, the improvement of the footbridge, and other trails in the area. So this is all about enhancing public access along our Town Brook that we have spent over the last twenty-five years, improving to the condition it's in today. I'd like to turn the presentation, presentation over to David Gould, the Director of the Department of Energy and Environment. He will be able to walk you through that section of the application outlining the scope of this request and the focus, as David gets the slideshow ready. Here he comes.
David Gould, Director of Marine Environmental Affairs. Welcome, David Gould, to the Town Meeting preview.
Thank you very much. I will give a brief background as to how we got here and what we're looking to specifically do with the CPA request. A little bit of the context, as previously described, the project is a larger scope that includes parking lot, lighting, dredging, bypass channel, dam repairs, and all the previous work we've done on Town Brook. This specific request has two main components, replacing the Jenny Pond footbridge and improving the path from behind the Jenny Griss Mill to Brewster Gardens. As many of you know, TPW has done significant work in the Jenny parking lot. Paths and sidewalks are much improved. When we did the Holmes Playground and the Newfield Street dam removal project, we also made new sidewalks, new paths, and those are also ADA compliant. The real issue, however, is when you go through that site from Newfield Street down into Jenny, the footbridge is not compliant. And so you have, essentially, have two parks that are ADA compliant that don't connect. The footbridge, as I mentioned, is going to be a focal point for some of this funding request. So we're going to be focused on that and connecting those two parks, and then focusing on the area from behind the Griss Mill to Brewster Gardens that otherwise we wouldn't be able to address with our bypass project. This just shows you the general area in which I just described. I think most people know the basketball court here up in Holmes Park, coming down to the cul-de-sac at Willard Place over to Jenny, and then that green line obviously brings you all the way down into Brewster Gardens. Some of the existing conditions that you see, this is the Jenny Pond footbridge. It is sort of at the end of its useful life in terms of the condition of the piles that were driven into the, into the pond, as well as not being ADA compliant. You can see it's wood. You can see the drops and the lack of accessibility to get up and over that footbridge. Walking down from behind the mill to Brewster Gardens, these are the existing pathways. So you can see the obvious wet spots there for the drainage. Anyone who walks Town Brook knows groundwater is very high, drains over the path. There are also no railings. When we get some extreme tides coming up, it sometimes floods over these, over these paths. The drainage concerns that we have are particularly acute in the wintertime. You see the drainage issues going over the path, and then in the winter months, it freezes, making it extremely treacherous to try and walk. And as you all know, this is an extremely popular place for folks to walk from the downtown up to Jenny and back. Some of the wall conditions, you can see the rocks have fallen apart. You can see some of the rusted conduit. You can see that's an approach to get through that bridge. Obviously, not very safe going there with the condition of the stone walls like that. One more slide with some of the sinkholes and low grades, lack of railing. So these are all the things that we would like to do. One of our main goals is when we do the bypass project to improve all the pathways and not abruptly end with a brand-new pathway and then go to these kind of conditions in the slides that I just showed. Some of the Some of the, some of the design work we're working towards, obviously to improve and focus on a lot of the restoration work we've done on Town Brook. New ADA-compliant paths, these are connecting the walkway along the Brook but also connecting it to the main roads and the adjacent sidewalks. These are some of the plans that we're looking at. This is the walk area from Main Street Extension, Market Street, I'm sorry, to Main Street Extension heading to Brewster Gardens. As many of you know, there are some small rivulets that go underneath the walkway there, but it's a very wet area. This would be a precast structure and we could get the walkway above. So anytime there's rainfall events, everything would be going underneath the walkway, not making it wet, not having frozen conditions as in the wintertime. Some of the challenges and why we're here today, back in 2019, just before COVID, we had received a park grant to do quite a bit of work focused on replacing the Jenny Pond footbridge. As you all know, we had numerous delays to have a town meeting because of COVID, and when we finally did, the combination of the limited timeframe to get approval and then the time-of-year restrictions we have in our permits, we actually had to give the grant money back. We reapplied and got the same park grant again in 2021, put it out to bid, and post-COVID, the budget now is 35 percent over. So we had to return grant money not once but twice. We're still looking, we have over $12 million in grant funds out there right now. We're hearing some positive reviews on many of those, but we would like to get the footbridge done once and for all and focus on the rest of our work. So in summary, we're requesting $3 million, approximately 1.3 would be for the footbridge, approximately 1.6 for all that additional trailwork that I mentioned. We have NOA funding pending. I mentioned February 24. We actually have a call with NOA coming up in the next month. Obviously, those have been delayed a few months, but I do think we're, we're getting very close. And then we have some state grant pen, funding that's pending for a pilot program that the state started this spring for some funding for the dredging project, which is, again, some additional funding we're trying to bring into the larger overall project of improvements at Jenny Pond and Town Brook. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
And at this time, unless there's any other things to bring up on 16D open space, we're going to move to 16E, Reduce the Borrowing Pilgrim Hall Museum. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16E with a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use available fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Act revenues to reduce the borrowing commitment for the historical preservation, restoration, and rehabilitation of the Pilgrim Hall Meeting Museum.
Thank you. And Mr. Cohen will be available as the Chair of the Committee Preservation Committee. And next, we're going to move on. Mr. Cohen, were you going to say anything with respect to this article?
No, the only thing I was going to indicate to people is that these two articles that you're seeing, like you saw in the special, they're not asking for additional funding. We're just asking to reduce borrowing. This is how the committee manages getting things in front of town meeting sooner than rather than than later so we can manage that. And I'd like to also just let all the town meeting members know that there is going to be a site visit on Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00 o'clock in the morning at 54 Industrial Park Road. An invitation has gone out to all of them. There'll be a reminder that will be sent out. We also have a site visit inviting all town meeting members to look at Article 16C at Redbrook, and that time is from 9:30, excuse me, 11:30 to 1:00. So we'll remind town meeting members with an email, but thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Article 16F, Reduce Borrowing Stevens Field, Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16F with a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will authorize the town to use available fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Act revenues to reduce the borrowing commitment for the restoration and rehabilitation of Stevens Field.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Cohen already spoke to this. We'll go to Article 16G, the fiscal 2025 annual budget. Mr. Nierman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 16G by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will allow the Community Preservation Committee to allocate 10 percent of the estimated annual revenues of the Community Preservation Fund, CPA, for future spending in community housing. Additionally, 4 percent of the estimated annual revenues of the CPA will be set aside for funding administrative and operational expenses, and an amount will be set aside for interest expense on debt.
Thank you. Again, Community Preservation Committee available to answer questions. We're going to move on to Article 17, amend a bylaw on dog control. Mr. Nierman.
Moderator. The Advisory and Finance Committee recommends town meeting approve Article 17 by a unanimous vote. Approval of this article will amend General Bylaws Chapter 13, Chapter 23, Animals, Article I, Dog Control, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the proposed language as on file with the town clerk.
And speaking of town clerk, we have her here with us this evening, Kelly McElreith. Anything you'd like to add?
Nope, I'll just be available to answer any questions that day.
18, MBTA Communities. We're going to begin with a presentation with a video. Like to again thank the local scene for assisting us with this. Thank you.
Article 18 seeks to bring Plymouth into compliance with the state's Housing Choice Act, also known as the MBT Communities Law. Compliance with this law is mandatory. What does this mean for the town of Plymouth? Plymouth is required to create zone capacity for 2,807 multifamily housing units. It's important to emphasize that this law requires that Plymouth only put zoning in place. It does not require that the town construct or build any actual units. Failure to comply with this law will make Plymouth ineligible for several major grants. In addition, the town will lose competitiveness for over a dozen more grants. Over the past five years, the town has received over $10 million in such grants. We will no longer be eligible for those grants. In addition, as we've seen with other communities, the town will most likely face legal challenges for failure to comply. With the assistance of the Barrick Planning Group, the town held two public forums and a joint Select Board, Planning Board meeting. The direction given to us by the community was to take credit for the multifamily development that has already occurred in town and to minimize any potential impacts of this new multifamily zoning on the town of Plymouth. Therefore, we are proposing a zoning overlay district of the existing multifamily development at Cordish Park, Colony Place, Pine Hills, and the Oasis 40B on Home Depot Road. After adoption, we expect that no new multifamily development will occur. The land has either been developed or already approved for multifamily development. This article has been reviewed by town council and is supported unanimously by the Planning Board, Select Board, and Advisory Finance Committee. We hope that you will support our efforts and bring Plymouth into compliance with this mandatory state law. Thank you.
Thank you. And now the Advisory and Finance Committee does move to amend the Plymouth zoning bylaw in accordance with its report by adding the new district, multifamily overlay district. And in addition to the Finance Committee vote, and Mr. Nierman will speak at town meeting. Lee Hartman, anything else you wish to add?
No, I think 1 minute 45 seconds was enough.
Thank you very much. We'll move on then to Article 19, Historically Significant Buildings. And again, Mr. Nierman moves the town vote to amend its general bylaws with the provision, preservation of historically significant buildings, and we have the language in the chain, it's in the, in the text, and it's a majority vote. And Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development, any comments?
I would almost call this a housekeeping item. This just really is looking to give an extra week of time for the Historic District Commission to make a decision if something's historically significant. They're finding that the 14-day timeline is forcing them to make decisions, and again, I think we want to let them for their sake and as well as the applicants who are coming forward, making sure there's enough time for that initial decision to be made. So again, it's more of a housekeeping item.
Thank you. And that's Article 19. Article 20 is withdrawn. The final article, Article 21, Amending the Zoning Bylaw Ground Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Systems, and the Advisory and Finance Committee has approved it. And we have with us here this evening, Mark Pacico. He is a Plymouth resident, and I believe he's out in the hall. And so if someone can invite him in. And while we do that, I would like to thank all of the members of the panel. I'd like to thank Michelle Badger, Chair of the Plymouth School Committee, and the Assistant Moderator, Nicole Manfredi, Kelly McElreith, she is our town clerk, also Lynn Barrett, Director of Finance, Silvio Gennaro, who is Assistant Town Manager, Kevin Canty, Vice Chair of the Select Board, Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development. And now we'll go back to Article 21. It's a two-thirds vote, and Mark Pacico, welcome.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Press your green light.
Good, good.
Very good. Go ahead, Mark.
Sorry about that, I didn't realize you moved pretty quickly.
Go ahead.
So just very quickly, we have received the unanimous support of the Energy Committee, unanimous support of the Board of Selectmen, a four-nothing vote at the Planning Board. Unfortunately, Mr. Peck wasn't there that night. What we have accomplishes much the same goals as we had last time, but it's in clearer and more precise language reflecting the votes of the various committees and boards that we've done before. I'm mainly just getting up to ask if there's any questions.
I don't see any questions, so thank you. But people can contact you prior to town meeting if they have questions.
Absolutely.
And if there's nothing else to come before us at this preview, I'd like to thank everybody for joining us. This will be replayed on PAC TV. Again, this is the original presentation on March 28, 2024. I'm Steve Truffletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. Thank you for joining us.